To recall about a year ago, we were trying to determine how do we make sure that we're getting the information we need as a board on our specialty schools and how do we look at what we've accomplished, what we're doing right now, and what we have in mind for the year and years ahead. And so out of that conversation came the growth that we'll move to an annual update to the Board of Education on what those demographics and results look like. So today is the second annual report on our specialty schools. And here to deliver that report is Dr. Voison and Anne Smith.
I'm just trying to help her troubleshoot this.
We're just getting ready to get the technology.
Here to troubleshoot is Dr. Voison. Here to give the report is Anne Smith.
Okay.
Maybe.
So we are just trying to see if we can... Can we use this thing?
My point to get the display work, just in case.
We were faced with the decision of do we just relocate you all over there, or do we bring in another display on this side when we opt in, whether we're just gonna bring in another display? In the meantime, we were gonna...
Wouldn't be an issue except it would be more bad.
Right, right.
Not bad personally.
There's a lot of technology going on in here. Can't Todd just start pushing buttons?
I think he tried that.
Oh, sure is cool out there, isn't it?
It's a good time to remind everybody to vote.
I voted today.
September 18th is the final day of vote.
You can vote at IPC all the way up until then, can't you?
Except for this Sunday, next Saturday, it could even vote this Saturday here at IPC.
I heard that Saturday morning.
Saturday from when to when?
Nine to one.
Wow, I didn't even know you were behind me. So those that are in Brookings or Vermillion going to school that are residents here, it'd be a good time to drive home and go there.
So you're gonna put the papers?
Just as another time filler, I know that the President will be in town on Friday. The impact for the school district is we have a six o'clock football game and however we feel that, you know, we opted to leave the start time at six o'clock. I think things are going to wrap up. So I think the logistics will all just...
Get there early or no?
I don't know. I don't know that it really matters because I don't believe it'll impact Parkview Block. There aren't going to be thousands to see the resident. So I don't think it'll be a big picture. I just think it'll be, there'll be some places that ordinarily you might be able to watch and you won't be able to walk. Some places that you might ordinarily drive and you won't be able to drive until the president.
I didn't know where the event was gonna be, so now I know.
Or to the football game?
No.
Well, if you're just showing what I think it's showing, then I'm hoping...
I'm just trying to... How is that one kill? Just Josh up.
Was it before?
Let me research.
I didn't know that that was... They don't always tell me where the President's gonna be.
So my sister-in-law, she's huge, huge public.
Really, really?
So it might yet. It used to be a broken news. I had a personal, so much connection to them earlier.
It's, the whole story's bizarre. Just, yeah. I have reminded a couple of groups since Saturday that Pagan and I are really proud of our two daughters, too.
I haven't heard that.
I noticed that you threw in the debate.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just follow up, yes. I asked Shelley not to say that, thank you, because I don't really want to broadcast this. My house looks good. So this Sunday play in.
Can you see it? Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
So for our second annual update on specialized schools in the Sioux Falls School District, just a quick overview of the district, of the specialized schools that we have. Last year, the combined enrollment, which at that time there were five elementary, four elementary schools and one high school that were specialized schools, the combined enrollment was 2,230. This year, now that we've brought on three more elementary schools with our computer science immersion schools, the combined enrollment is 3,895. Just a quick reminder that three of our elementary specialized schools have no geographic boundary. All of the students in there come from all across the district. And our specialized high school, New Tech High, similarly has no geographic boundary. As we go through and look at the demographics of our specialized schools, just to give you a point of reference, our district demographics as far as ethnicity show that in 2017-18, so this school year that we just finished, we were about 62% white and with the remainder being of diverse ethnicities. Demographically, district-wide, you can see that we had about, about 44% of our students qualified for free and reduced lunch, about 16% qualifying for special education, gifted, gifted were about 7%. English language learners represent about 10% of the district, and then about 5% of our enrollment comes from outside the Sioux Falls School District boundaries. The first specialized school that I'm gonna talk about is All City Elementary, which is also the first specialized school that the Sioux Falls School District started. All City is dedicated to creating a community of learners. Their enrollment in 2018 was 148. They were established in 1974. Their focus is making the classroom an extension of the community and the world at large. Parents are deliberately and purposefully integrated into the classroom instruction so that when a student is enrolled at All City Elementary, their family signs a contract that that parent is going to volunteer in the school for one half-day each week. Another unique focus is students coming and forming family groups, so it's kind of a multi-age learning environment for many activities. If you separate out by grade level, so kindergarten and first grade both in 2017-18 had 25 students in each class, 24 in third grade, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth. I shouldn't have started telling you that because now I can see that my numbers don't add up. But roughly in every class, there is between 22 and 26 students. Demographically, All City does not match the district demographics, tends to be more, 95% white, and this shows the change from 2017 to 2018. So when you're talking about 150 kids, it doesn't take a lot to show a little bit of change. Demographically, again, not necessarily mirroring the district, although in terms of free and reduced lunch, although with special education and gifted, they're fairly close. They do have 18% of their students who are coming from outside the Sioux Falls School District. If you look at their smarter balance results, All City is one of our exemplary high-performing student, high-performing schools, ranking in the top 5% of elementary schools across the state of South Dakota. Strengths of the program, again, that parent involvement, as well as some monthly community service opportunities, they do an annual musical, made reference to their multi-age family groups. Another strength that doesn't come right out here in the bullet points is that All City is located at Jane Adams, which is where our Elementary Immersion Center is located. So those two programs work together for a lot of activities. And we'll get to those when we talk about the goals. In terms of challenges, that heavy parent involvement, it's one of those things, how often in an interview do you get the question, what is your strengths and what are your weaknesses? And a lot of times our strengths are also playing to our weaknesses. One of the challenges for All City is training for those parents because they're in the classroom that much. How do you make sure that they're understanding how we teach math, how they can best help and support the classroom instruction? We list on their equity and access just because we are ever-conscious of the fact that their demographics don't quite match the overall district demographics. How do we ensure that all families who might want to take advantage of the All City experience have equal equitable access to that program? In terms of goals, one of the things that the All City staff has expressed that they want to pay deliberate attention to this year is vertical integration of instruction. The teachers will be collaborating weekly in groups, kindergarten K through 2 groups as well as 3 through 5. They're tracking their map data and they're seeing that there's some differences, so they want to see how that they can make sure that they're supporting both their high achievers and those that are struggling. Another goal is to integrate coding. They began this last year. They use a program called Our Code. They also have had some parents who have made some donations so that they could get some Ozobots and Osmos, little fun devices that the students can use. One of the things that they do is bring in their EIC friends when they start working on that coding. So that coding experience is not just an All City experience, it's also partnering with the Elementary Immersion Center kiddos. They are also working with a program called the Seven Habits of Happy Kids. That's a Stephen Covey program, and so they're trying to promote even more their student leadership through that program. The Challenge Center was established in 1996. Last year, their enrollment was 171 students. One thing I might just make quick note of is they have a new principal this year. Colleen Werner retired at the end of the year last year, and so Lynn Gillette has taken the helm at the Challenge Center. This program is a piece of our district gifted education program. So this is where we have a full-day offering for those students who have shown to be the most highly gifted. It's for students in grades 2 through 5. Their students are selected based on their COGAT ability test and their NWA map scores. We've integrated into their curriculum some specialized things such as the junior grade books. We use the FOS Hands-on Science Curriculum there. And then we have enrichment activities including the Math Masters and Geography B. Enrollment in each grade increases, so if you look at second, at second grade, they had 20 students. By the time we get up to the fifth grade, there were 54 students enrolled, so there's two sections of fifth grade, two sections of fourth grade, two sections of third grade. Demographically, again, not exactly a mirror of the Sioux Falls School District, and their demographics have stayed pretty stable from 2017 to 18 at about 80%, 81% white. Free and reduced, about 14%, so again, not exactly a mirror of the Sioux Falls School District as a whole. Special education, though, there are about 12% of their students that are on an IEP for one reason or another, so just sometimes it might surprise people to realize, yes, students can be gifted and also be on an IEP. About 12% of their population does come from outside the school district. The Challenge Center is another high-performing exemplary school in the top 5% of the state of South Dakota consistently for the last three years. The strengths of this particular program are their compacted and accelerated curriculum and that ability to bring together students who are like-minded. It's one of the things that the research shows that when you get into those very, at the very ends of the spectrum, students really benefit from being with peers who are more like them, so that then they can then drive each other.
Cam?
Yes.
Going back one side.
Yeah.
I noticed this on the All City, too, but so you've got Challenge Center. What's CD element?
Oh, thank you for asking that question, Kate. That's an elementary school in the district with comparable demographics. So recognizing that those demographics can impact your results, what we wanted to show is that they truly are performing... Better than expected considering most things.
Considering their demographics.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Another strength of the Challenge Center program is that they are able to extend that experience into middle school by going on into the honors program at Edison. Now, it isn't just Challenge Center students who can go to the honors program at Edison. When they go to Edison in that honors program, they'll be with other gifted kids from all across the district, because any gifted, any student who has been identified as gifted can choose to enroll in the honors program at Edison. Some of the challenges that they face at the Challenge Center include how do you meet the needs of that asynchronous child? That child who intellectually can grasp so much more than they might emotionally and in their chronological age maturity be able to handle. And how do you help both the student and the parent really understand what giftedness means? So you can have a gifted student who perhaps is not getting particularly good grades, who perhaps doesn't perform well in the classroom, but they have the intellectual ability. And so how do you meet their needs and recognize what it is that their giftedness does for One of the things that we did last year was did a study to look at our identification and gifted education program as a whole program, just making sure that when we look at equity and access, are we truly identifying all of the kids who have the characteristics that would benefit from a program like the Challenge Center? In terms of their goals, continuing support for social and emotional needs and ongoing professional development for their own staff, as well as looking at how do we have a sustainable quality pathway for our students who are double-accelerated in math, which we even have to look at that as a whole, district as a whole? Because what happens then if that student, when that student gets to high school? Do we have sufficient math to keep them challenged all the way through 12th grade? And then the other goal that we have for the Challenge Center is just an overall review of instructional delivery. We have accelerated and compacted curriculum. Do we also work at diving deeper with our curriculum? Are there, have there been changes in the last 10 to 15 years that we could take advantage of, new ways of instruction that we haven't pursued that would be possible now with technology? Are there things that we could be doing with coding? So we'll begin that soon, and we'll be having parents and teachers and community members help us look at that. Eugene Field is our arts plus elementary, which was established in 2001. Their enrollment in 2018 was 448. They provide a strong academic program using drama, visual arts, music, and dance to meet the needs of every child. In addition to art, music, and PE and library, students have dance, drama, and art integration. And at Eugene Field, at all the other elementary schools, art, music, PE, library would be 35 minutes. At Eugene Field, that has been extended to 42 minutes to give the students more time. The other thing that is unique to Eugene Field is it is both students from all across the district and the neighborhood school. So Eugene Field has to have room for all of the neighborhood students who choose to come there, as well as planning for however many students from across the district are open enrolling. Looking at their grade level breakdown, it stays relatively stable, ranging from 67 students to 86 students in the largest class. Demographically, 76% white, that has dropped to 75% this year. And then in terms of free and reduced, more closely mirroring what we might see across the district, and special education being a little higher than we might see across the district. And not seeing as many students, while there's a lot of open enrollment from other schools within the Sioux Falls School District, we're not seeing as many out-of-district people choosing to come in and go to Eugene Field. In terms of smarter balance results, because their demographics are so similar to the district as a whole, we didn't do that comparable demographics because the district represents the comparable demographics. And you can see that Eugene Field's performance is about the same, slightly higher in 2015 and 16 as the district as a whole, but then in 2017 being about the same. In terms of strengths, those monthly, multiple intelligences are their, one of their hallmarks, and they see that as their greatest strengths. They have expanded that to twice a month. It used to just be once a month. They, the multiple intelligences experiences are 42 minutes. They're facilitated by staff members who teach a common lessons designed by their, a team comes and says, this is what we're gonna do at this multiple attentions intelligences experience, and then the staff members do that with their classes. Some of the challenges that Eugene Field places, faces, it's the only A-plus art school in the area. And when I say area, I don't just mean in our five-state region. I mean, it's the area. There aren't art schools. When they go for training with other similar schools, they go to North Carolina, which is one of the states that has the strongest arts integration. The funding therefore for their professional development is an ongoing challenge. Their parents and PTA is able to raise about $4,000 a year to support what, they have a three-year cycle for summer retreats, and when the district does what we can to support them, but it is an ongoing challenge when you look at the size of their staff and then think about where, having to travel to North Carolina or how far they would have to go to really tap into some good quality open enrollment, professional development. They also express a need for ongoing support for social and emotional needs of students. One of the things that they've been doing for that is the Boys Town emphasis and ongoing training and working to implement that with fidelity, so that continues to be one of their goals, and it continues to be one of the things that they spend quite a bit of their time for professional development every summer on. Like All City, they're spending a lot of time with their staff working on collaboration. They've got an 84-minute common time for each grade-level team to work together. The cross-collaboration supports their A-plus philosophy by embedding the arts into the curriculum and the curriculum into that, to the arts. So in addition to looking at how do we overall teach these lessons better to build math and reading skills, they're looking at how do we teach these lessons better to build math and reading skills as we are building dance, as we are doing music, as we are doing visual Rosa Parks Global Studies Elementary was established in 2007. Their enrollment in 2018 was 577. You may recall that last year, their title was Rosa Parks Global Studies and World Language Elementary, but we did make the decision last year to drop the FLESS portion of the Rosa Parks curriculum and focus on global studies. We weren't seeing the continuation in FLESS as students were moving into middle school and with only 15 minutes, with such a limited amount of language, weren't seeing that that was necessarily where we wanted the strength, to place our emphasis. But the global studies focus continues to be making sure that all students, by the time they've graduated fifth grade, have had an experience and a focus on a different continent or country. Kindergarten focuses on North America, those are littles that we're just integrating into school in general, and then all the way up through fifth grade where they're looking at Europe. Rosa Parks is one of our ELL center-based sites, so when we look at, look at their class sizes, but then when you look at their demographics, their ethnicity is actually more diverse than the district as a whole and is increasing, increasingly more diverse each year. And when you look at the number of ELL students, about 24% of their students are ELL students. So one of the things that they have started doing is deliberately integrating those ELL students into the global studies focus, so that they're bringing those families in and trying to build on the strengths of that very diverse population. In terms of their smarter balance results, again, just comparing them to the district, their performance still leaves room for improvement, but that's what the teachers continue to focus on and look at what they can do. Their strengths, as I mentioned, that global studies curriculum and then the value of all cultures. And the students are getting more and more excited about this. One of the things that they've started doing is at the upper grades, fourth, fifth, third, fourth, fifth grade, each week the kids help give announcements, and when they say good morning and hello, they say it in one of the languages that's represented in their, in their school. So that the students are being not just exposed to one foreign language, but really recognizing that across the world, we as a human people speak a whole variety of languages. There's a mistake. So I'm, this should be Rosa Parks challenges, and it is, they will continue their refining their purpose and vision. With taking, with moving away from FLESS and then doing that more developed focus on the global studies, one of the things that they're deliberately looking at in their collaboration models is how do we, how do we do a good job of integrating that? And one of their goals is to continue to involve the community more with their Festival of Nations celebration that they do in the spring. Sonia Sotomayor is our Spanish immersion elementary, which was established in 2009, just after Rosa Parks was established as the global studies. Their mission, to develop lifelong multilingual learners with a cultural background and problem-solving skills to succeed in an ever-changing world. And, as you know, their unique focus is that all instruction beginning in kindergarten is delivered in Spanish. Beginning in third grade, students have 45 minutes of English language arts. So it's a 90-10 model for kindergarten first and second grade, and an 80-20 model for third, fourth, and fifth grade. Enrollment increases as you get down to the lower grades. We built that to make sure that we were operating the program at capacity. So we have five sections of kindergarten and first grade and continue to have five sections as we do the lottery for incoming classes. Looking at their demographics, not quite mirroring the district demographics at 81 to 82% white. Their free and reduced is a little lower than the district as a whole. With 10% of their students free and reduced, they do have a fairly significant number of their students who end up identified as gifted. And also about 25% of their students are open enrolling from outside the Sioux Falls School District. They are our third specialized program that is an exemplary high-performance school. So scoring in the top 5% of school districts across the state. And if you look at them compared to an elementary school with comparable demographics, you can see that they continue consistently perform better than or at, at least as well as comparable demographics. So in addition to their performance on the English smarter balance, they're also bilingual. So they're doing this well and they're learning second language. Terms of their strengths, one of the things that truly is a strength of Sonia Sotomayor is their cohesive yet diverse staff, their teaching staff. We tend to think, we tend to, some of us may think of diversity in terms of black, Hispanic, the typical subgroups that we talk about. The diversity at Sonia Sotomayor is because our teachers are coming from a variety of Spanish-speaking countries, which gives our students the, the luxury of hearing Spanish spoken in a variety of different ways. And understanding that Spanish isn't just a monolithic language, that it, that it can be different. In addition to that, we also have native English-speaking teachers who are proficient in Spanish, are able to teach fluently in Spanish. And so they show our students that you can become very, that you can become bilingual, you can become biliterate. You don't have to be a native Spanish speaker to be a fluent proficient Spanish speaker. This year, we hired an instructional coach to support Sonia Sotomayor and the whole Spanish immersion program. So that instructional coach has spent the summer working on helping to bring together the teachers to work on curriculum, to help them work through some of the actual recommendations from the actful report. So they've been very busy and that's seen as one of the strengths of the program. It's just the district supporting, coming behind and helping them do that. Their strengths can also be seen as you look at their performance on the smarter balance. We saw that and then on the stamp. One of the things that we did this summer was had the, had Avant Assessment, who is who developed the stamp assessment that we give our Spanish immersion students. They analyzed our scores and compared them to national norms for immersion programs across the country. And our students consistently outperformed the national norms at every grade level. So we've developed a strong program. Some of the challenges that we continue to face, because of course we want it to not only be a strong program today, we want it to be a strong program tomorrow and an even stronger program. So one of the things that we'll continue working on is making sure that we have a coherent, sequenced integration of culture and customs, so that our curriculum is not just looking at language, but is also making sure that we've got, that students are learning about the variety of cultures in the Spanish-speaking countries. And then another challenge is making sure that we have appropriate interventions. It can be challenging because the interventions that you need for a student who is learning to read in English might look different than they, than they look in Spanish. And when you're teaching them to read in Spanish, you need to be sure that they're reading in Spanish and you don't want to confuse them because there are differences between English and Spanish. So how do we make sure that whatever interventions we're doing strengthen both languages as well as possible and don't work against each other? So ongoing goals for Sonia Sotomayor, continuing the implementation of the trans-adapted English language arts. Sonia Sotomayor uses the same English language arts curriculum that we use at all the other elementaries. But what we've done is not just translated it into English, but into Spanish, but we've adapted it for Spanish. So that, because some, just doing a literal translation wouldn't make sense. How do you take that sequence and make sure that it is accurately and effectively teaching the Spanish language? We've been working with a consultant from Collaborative Classroom to do that. She is a native Spanish speaker herself and she was one of the people that helped develop the Collaborative Classroom curriculum. So she's been a huge resource for us. Another goal is to continue working on the interpersonal performance assessments or what we call IPAs, because we want to be sure that when we get those IPAs in place, that we can be confident that they're predictive of the stamp results. So that we, so that we can use them well as a formative assessment to be sure that we're on target for students having the fluency that we expect in Spanish. New Tech High is our specialized high school established in 2010. In 2018, the enrollment was 307. Their focus is a project-based learning skill. They're part of the National New Tech Network. Students at New Tech are graded not only on their content knowledge, but also on collaboration, agency, which includes grit, perseverance, growth mindset. They're written and communication and oral communication. And there's a strong emphasis on working with the community, to bring in community members for internships and projects that are done at New Tech. New Tech students are allowed to take dual enrollment college classes at Southeast Tech tuition-free. If you look at enrollment at New Tech, you'll see that the enrollment numbers do drop off by 12th grade. Some of that, we'll talk about when we get to some of the challenges that New Tech faces. Demographically, again, not quite a match of the district demographics overall. 2017, they were 78% white, 2018, 74% white. Their, but their free and reduced is not too far off of the district. District being 44%, New Tech being 39%. Gifted numbers at 9% gifted tends to be actually a little higher than most high schools would represent. And out of district, about 10% of the students coming into New Tech are from outside the Sioux Falls School District. Smarter balance results, our New Tech students do very well in English language arts. They are continuing to look at what they can do to improve those math scores. Deliberately integrating numeracy tasks into some of their projects. One of the things that they see is it's a challenge to develop a project that really gets that sequential math that you need. But when it comes to the ACT, they're doing quite well. So their composite in 2016-17 was higher than the state or national composite at 22.5. And graduation rate, the students at New Tech stick with it and graduate. So their graduation rate was 98.55% in 2016-17. Terms of strengths, they are a demonstration site for the New Tech Network. That means that we have people that come here throughout the year to see how does a project-based learning school work. They have about 300 community partners who have helped them develop applications to the real world in our, in our projects that are being done. In terms of challenges, the primary reason that students give for choosing New Tech or for leaving New Tech is the lack of sports facilities and instrumental music on campus. It's something that the kids who go to New Tech are truly choosing it for the type of instruction that they're able to receive. So they do make some sacrifices. In terms of their goals, one of the things that they want to have in place by 2021 is a senior capstone course. Continued focus on the numeracy tasks and project, projects that continues, don't let that 2021 date make you think that all of these goals are for 2021. That's really just the senior capstone. The other thing, when you look at what they're articulating as their student outcomes, you really get a feel for what it is holistically that the New Tech program is trying to do. They want 100% of the students to successfully complete a high school completion pathway, as well as 100% of students complete at least one job shadow or internship and 100% of students complete, successfully create a post-secondary plan. Then finally, the newest addition to our specialized programs, the Computer Science Immersion Program, started at Annie Sullivan Hayward and Lowell last year. The coding is embedded through all grades. By grade four, students are using the Java program language. Through the focus on embedded coding, the students are building creativity, critical thinking, communication, collaboration and confidence. And here's where you'll see that here is a specialized program that truly does diverge from the district norm the other way. So only 35% of the students and the, if you combine all of their enrollments at the three elementary schools, 35% of the students are white and then 65% are from ethnic backgrounds. And again, if you look at free and reduced lunch, 81% of the students in the computer science immersion schools qualify for free and reduced lunch. 25% of them are English language learners. So when we introduced the computer science immersion schools, one of our goals for our specialized programs was how do we help make sure that we have all of our families have equal access to a high-quality program? If you look at the overall demographics from 2017 to 2018 and combine them without the computer science immersion schools, in 2017, we had about 73% of the students were white. And in 2018, about 72% of the students are white. So a slight shift towards more demographically diverse. But then when you put computer science immersion in with it, it becomes, it makes a huge difference. So that we have 56% of our students who are in a specialized program are white. And compare that to the district ethnicity in the same timeframe at 62%. So that has made a difference. We are adding Whittier and McGovern this year as middle schools that will be computer science immersion schools. Their demographics are very similar to Annie Sullivan Lowell and Hayward. So this slide will likely certainly continue to be about at that 56%. I would actually expect that it might go a little bit more diverse once we get Whittier and McGovern introduced. And that is an overview of the specialized programs as they look on September 5th, 2018. Yes Cynthia?
With the Addis district and open enrollments, do we track, like, is there a certain school district we have majority of from or do you track that information?
I would have, I don't, do I, do we know? I don't know if we do or not, I'd have to follow up with that. I assume we do, but.
Yeah, I know we do, but not right off the top of my head. I know we would, I know we would know that.
I'm just thinking, you know, through Sonia and Ace and Challenge.
We, yeah.
Just more of a curiosity.
And at New Tech, I, we talked about how the seniors are a much smaller class. Can students enroll in New Tech at any year? I know that the big push is at the freshman, you have to do the application. What does that process look like after the freshman year? Is it the same?
I don't believe that they have to go through, I think if there's room, they can.
It's more of an interview process after your, after your freshman year.
Okay. I'm assuming they look at your success or challenges probably at a traditional high school and say, you've proven that you would actually be a really good candidate.
Try to, try to figure out that the pedagogy and the instructional delivery is a match for your skills.
Do we have any kind of a strategy in place? And I, I appreciate that the, that the demographics have shifted significantly since we started the, the computer immersion a year ago. And I think that's great. The numbers at All City, the Challenge Center, Eugene Field still tend to not be close to what our demographics is as far as ethnicity in the district with the other schools. Do we have any kind of strategy in place to try and bring those closer together?
Well, first of all, Kent, that's a really good point. To, to look at where we were two years ago and where we are today is really smoke and mirrors. Because the computer science immersion schools went into schools that have a demographic that's really going to skew that.
Right.
So when we look at the schools, other than the computer science immersion schools and say, what has been the change? There really hasn't been much. I think you saw 1%, a 1% difference, so largely the same demographic. The one thing that we've done is we've looked at how do we admit students into the Challenge Center? And our, one of the goals that we have there is to make sure that we're admitting students who are deserving and students who are deserving regardless of race, regardless of ethnicity, regardless of socioeconomic condition. So we, I would say we have implemented one strategy in the last year that we think will begin to address that, but I think that's it at this point.
So I think about the Challenge, you know, you spoke specifically about the Challenge Center. I know we talked last year when we looked at the challenges, a lot of it is transportation. So if a gifted child that doesn't live close to Rock Cross, are we going to offer them any sort of transportation to that school to get them there? Because I see that as the biggest challenge, especially if you've got a socioeconomic.
There's plenty of them that ride the P base bus. And if they have a free and reduced lunch, they would have a free and reduced rate for P base blessing as well.
They can transport it from their home school to them.
Right.
I don't know what it's free and reduced lunch.
$50 for free, $100 I think for reduced. Sometimes the principal will scholarship that.
It's a, it's a really, it's a really good question. I don't think we're losing students because of transportation. But the, the ease of transportation isn't solving the problem either.
I guess I just want us to make sure that we continue to look at how we can increase the enrollment in our specialty schools for our, our kids that are non-white.
For all students.
For all students. And to me, those numbers over time need to, need to get closer together for me to be completely satisfied that we're doing the very best we can for, for some of our students that are underserved through absolutely no fault of their own. And you know, if we can put strategies in place to, to address that, I think we're doing right by every student in the district, so.
I think one thing I would be interested in looking at is at really all of the elementary programs, what is the attrition rate? And when people do leave, do we know why they leave? Because we might think that they leave for one reason, but it could be something totally different that we don't know about. It could be that it's transportation, but they don't want to say that. It could be that, you know, there was some other factor that we aren't even aware of that's either preventing people from starting at a school and going for one year and then leaving. Or, you know, not even a year, maybe they leave at semester time. And what does that look like demographically too? I know we have mobile populations, whether it's people who are professionals and they move for a better job in another city, but we also have. move for a better job in another city, but we also have mobile as in, you know, they just can't, they don't have a permanent place and it's a hotel or it's a family member. And so are those people being mobile and it's transportation issue because they signed, they could sign up for a bus stop, but that bus stop might not work for them three months from now. And so they, they can't do that. You know what I mean? We could give it to them for free, but it still doesn't help them because of whatever their, the other situation is. And they're like, I don't know. But I think that would be, might be an interesting thing to look at is.
You're, you're asking for an exit interview, basically?
Well, I mean, even on survey.
We were talking about students leaving the programs, right?
Yeah. I don't know how realistic that is and if people would even complete it. You know, it's optional, it's not like you could require somebody, but.
Well, first of all, first of all, it's data that I don't think that we know or have. So I, I think we could put a strategy in place to, at minimum, take that step and figure out, you know, what.
If it's viable or.
Or to see, do, do the reasons match up and show us that we have a problem? Maybe the, well, there could be any number of reasons for them leaving. We don't have that data and I think that would be something that we can certainly, is actionable for us.
Thank you. The, the report is great. And I mean, I, I am so proud of our school district for what we offer across the board. I don't want you to think that I'm criticizing what we're doing. I'm not. What's really good can always get better. And we do, we do a very good job with, with making lots of different options available to our students.
Yeah, I think that's the way we've taken all the comments. So I appreciate it.
Good. Yep. Any, any other questions or comments on that? Okay. Thank you, Ann. Very good. Committee assignments, we'll go through those. I'll start. Southeast Tech will be having our board meeting here and getting our enrollment numbers. We do have a policy, the Policy Review Committee did gear back up over the summer and we've, we've looked at a lot of policies and done review revise on several over the summer. And we've got the, one that we'll be looking at today on sexual misconduct, which is a new policy for STI. Chamber Board, I guess the particularly good news with the Chamber Board is they have endorsed the bond issue that will be coming up for a vote on September 18th. Unanimous vote from the issues management and from the Chamber Board. So the Chamber is behind the effort and encourage everybody to either come in and absentee vote here in the district up until, or up until the 18th. And then 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the 18th is the, is the bond election. Budget Committee, we just had our wrap-up from, from Todd at our last board meeting and we have not started our official work on budget as of yet. Safe, secure schools, we've got a meeting coming up on, I think the 13th is, is when our next meeting is scheduled to look at what we're doing and how we're doing it to keep the kids as safe as they can be. Todd?
PTA is next Monday for the first meeting. We've not had an insurance meeting yet. Budget, I just got educated by Todd to start with. Make sure reporters we go along. Sports Authority, we have a new director, Thomas Lee just started. He's from North Carolina, really great guy and seems to have a lot of good ideas. The marathon has 24 runners, 2400 runners signed up at this point. That's September 8th and 9th. And the Sanford International Golf Tournament is September 19th to 23rd at Minnehaha Golf Course. The Associated School Board of South Dakota, we are hosting the Western Region Meeting coming up at the mid of this month, middle of this month. Each state hosts a regional meeting and it's our turn. So we're excited to show off our state to our region. And that's all I got.
Where will that be?
What's that?
Where will it be?
Rapid City. I fought really hard for Sioux Falls, but.
Yes, our first insurance meeting of this calendar school year will be September 20th. Calendar, we're not meeting at this point. Affordable housing, we met a couple weeks ago and accepted all the proposals that through, that will be public here soon. The new mayor is probably going to change the name of that committee from affordable housing to accessible housing, I think is what I saw in the paper. We discussed that a bit. Sioux Falls Education Foundation met yesterday. We're going through, we have some board members that will be term limited, so we've been proposing names and going through our board demographics just to make sure we hit everything of our current board and the new board, potential board members. Allison Struck's doing a great job. I met with her earlier yesterday. We're looking at possibly doing a signature event and just coming up with ideas to do some fundraising. She's worked with the Beryl House as well, as you've probably seen in the paper and on social media with some things. And they had their breakfast last month that was very well attended, so thanks.
We met for a policy yesterday, so we'll have a few coming up here regarding the new graduation requirements as well as GPA calculations. And then we revisited the athletic physicals for our high school students. So those will be posted. And then workforce development, we have, did not meet the last couple months, calendar we haven't met, and path. Nothing monumental to come of that, just continuing to work on safe pathways for students.
Thank you.
Policy, Carly touched on, Head Start, I unfortunately missed their first meeting because it was the same night as Open House Elementary and that's really what I think is.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all.